The ideas that they're pushing, the NEA, the NSBA, um, are very left leaning, very socialist, um, grounded.
Hi guys and welcome back to Martin's Daughter. Today I had the opportunity to interview Cole Kelly. And Cole is that unique, has that unique perspective because he's both a teacher and he's running for school board. To protect our children. Um, I've heard Cole speak a number of times and I follow him on social media. And it just seems like he's the kind of teacher that makes you feel like your kids, are getting that traditional education, that we have somebody there who's standing up and protecting our kids. So without further ado, here's Cole. Um, all right, I'm really excited to have this conversation because talking to teachers is something that, I mean, a lot of teachers are really tight lipped about what's going on. And um, I'm really very much worried about the situation with their kids. I wrote a post today and I felt like, uh, I felt like I put a tinfoil hat on. And I actually deleted it because I was like, I need, I need to make sure that I'm right about the things that I'm thinking before. So it's, I'm really grateful that you're willing to have this conversation. So just tell me, where did you, so you, you're, you're a teacher yourself?
Yeah, I, uh, I, I teach, I currently teach at American Fork High School. I've been, uh, teaching there for fifteen years. I teach financial literacy. Um, I, I, I was actually in college in English education major. And taught English for the first ten years of my career at Orm High School. And, uh, while I was teaching school at Orm High School, I was also working with ING Financial Partners as a financial planner. So when, um, the graduation requirement of financial literacy started to be required by the state of Utah. I, I really wanted to teach that class. AF had an opening and that's how I ended up at American Fork.
That sounds like something good that the school board's doing, that they have financial.
That was the legislature that, that, uh, that required that. So yeah, and, and, uh, there were a couple legislators that were key to making that happen. It's been, it's been very positive, I think, for the state of Utah to have that class as a, as a graduation requirement. We're, we're one of, I think only, I, I know it's single digits. I want to say six or seven. We're one of only like six or seven states in the country. That require a personal finance class for graduation, so.
That's, that's great. Um, so when did it, when did it change? You've been a teacher, how many years did you say?
Twenty-five years.
Twenty-five years. So when did, when did it start to change? And like, you're running for school board.
I am, yeah. And, and, and you know, I, I don't know that there's a definite point in time. I, I certainly think that the pandemic has, has, has helped to open people's eyes to what's going on. But I have certainly seen a gradual decline in terms of, um, how we conduct ourselves in education. Um, I love my job. I love my profession. I, I really enjoy working with kids. I love, um, running into kids five years down the road and, and, and seeing, you know, where they're at in their lives and, um, I'll always, uh, ask them, what did they learn in my class? And, and, uh, and, and oftentimes they can share some things with me. And I, that's something that, that I really, one of the rewards of teaching that I really enjoy. Um, but I, I mean, literally the, my second year as a school teacher, I started looking deeper into, um, I grew up in a home with a dad who was a steel worker at Geneva Steel. And, uh, he was a union guy. He was a union man through and through and, and, uh, growing up, I looked at unions and thought, these are, these are good things. They're, they look out for the worker and they protect the worker. So naturally as a first year teacher, I joined the teachers' union and, and I, but I'm also somebody who I'm, I'm gonna get involved. And, and I, I started to get involved and look at it and I started to look at what this, this organization stood for, what they represent, what, what ID, ideas they're pushing. And I, I recognized very early on that this is not an organization that's going to, help students move student, students in a positive direction. And, and, and at that point, um, you know, I think it was probably the second year of my teaching career that I no longer joined the union. Um, and, and, but, but steadily and gradually watched that organization, um, contribute to the decline of, um, what I think, education. And I think, I think they're the biggest barrier. I think the teachers' union is one of the biggest barriers to progress and, and real progress in education.
And which union? Are we talking National Teachers Union?
So it, what, what happens is, is, is there are, and this is where I, I had a conversation with, with a teacher last night. There is AEA, which is the Alpine Education Association. There's UEA, which is Utah Education Association. And there is NEA, which is the National Education Association. You can't belong to one without belonging to all of them. If you join the AEA, you also join the UEA and the NEA. Okay, so the, so it's, um, you know, the, the national level, the state level and the local level. And so the Alpine Education Association is a part of the UEA, which is the state and then NEA, which is the national.
So when a school board tells you that they are not part and that they have their own union or they have their own thing, they're, they are flat out being dishonest.
No, they, that, that's true. This, this, the, the school board members, um, the, the, their association, and this is where, this is a, a different order, but the National School Board Association, which is the NSBA. Um, the, the National School Board Association, that's a, that's a different organization, but, um, but that's, that's part of where we're, we're struggling is if, if you look at the NEA, which is the teachers' union on a national level. And you look at the National School Board Association, which is kind of a, it's, it's an organization that, they claim to be training local school boards and helping local school boards. The, um, the ideas that they're pushing, the NEA, the NSBA, um, are very left leaning, very socialist, um, grounded.
So how is it that teachers aren't recognizing this? Or, or are they being told not to admit that they're recognizing it?
This is, uh, so I had this conversation just last night. I, I was, I was at a cottage meeting. And, um, I had somebody ask the question and it was, it was the entire group, but I had somebody ask the question, you know, how, there, there's, uh, there are some school teachers out there that are conservative. How do we, how do we find conservative school teachers? How do we learn to recognize conservative school teachers? And I, and I said, hey, I, I, I think the easiest litmus test for me is, if, if you're a conservative, is a conservative teacher, you can't support these organizations. And if you belong to these organizations, I, I don't think that you can call yourself a conservative. Um, because they are, they, the ideology that they, um, are perpetuating is an absolute Marxist ide- ideology. They're, um, they're pushing the CRT. They're pushing the transgender athletes competing against girls. Um, they're pushing a left wing ideology. Um, and I, I had, I had a teacher in the room, okay, who was really upset by what I said. And she said, I'm a conservative and I belong to the union, but I only support the AEA, not the UEA and not the NEA. Okay, and, and so she, she was looking at and kind of isolating just that, that, that local organization. And I will admit that the, the more local organization, the Alpine Education Association, in their politics is, is definitely, um, I, I'm, I'm not gonna call them conservative, but they're not as radical as the UEA and the NEA. Uh, but I did have a, a chance to talk to this teacher after and kind of, and, and kind of help, help this person understand, look, um, i- i- if, if you're a conservative, it, it, it would, it would be like saying, I'm gonna join the Democratic Party and I'm gonna change the Democratic Party. You, you, you don't, you don't go, you know, I'm gonna go join the Democratic Party and try to make them conservative. Okay, the organization has a platform, has ideals, and you've got to look at what those are. And if you're, if you're going to join, you gotta know that your dollars, that you're paying for membership in that organization is going to go towards those causes.
So in terms of those causes, what I'm wondering is, it sounds to me like a lot of teachers are being slow boiled. When you say that they're being taught critical race theory, they're not coming out and flat out saying, or are they, that,
No.
Today we're teaching a lesson on critical race theory, which is why so many teachers believe it's not here. Even though at the meantime, they're, they're applying all of that praxis, right?
Right.
Applying it without knowing that what they're actually doing is critical race theory. How is that happening?
Education and, and, and this is, this is where it's, it's been a struggle for me. But education is a socialist system in our country right now.
Yeah.
If, if, if you, if you look at some of the tenants and the ideals of socialism, okay, everybody gets paid the same, right? So school teachers, there's no merit pay for teachers. It doesn't matter what kind of a job you do, you know? It, it, it only has to do with your level of education and the number of years that you've worked. And, and there's a pay scale that says, this is how much you're going to get paid. So teachers who are doing an excellent job get paid the same amount as teachers who do a poor job. Okay, um, and, and what, what we see with that, what we see with the, the ideas of socialism is, it, it, it encourages an atmosphere of mediocrity, okay? Um, but, but to go even a step further, one of the things that you're seeing, Alpine School District is big on, collaboration, right? And you're seeing, oh, you know, we're gonna let the teachers out one day a week, a little bit early so they can get together and they can collaborate, right? And what we're doing in, in those collaboration meetings is we're working on our scope and sequence where we're saying, okay, this is what subjects or these are the, 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 the subjects we're gonna teach. And this is when we're gonna teach them and this is how we're going to teach them. And so we're, we're taking every subject in, in essence, and we're saying, okay, this is how this is gonna be taught. And it's creating a scenario where when, when you and I went to school, we had one teacher that may teach the subject this way and another that may teach it this way. And, and we maybe chose to take the subject from this teacher because our learning style matched up more with that teacher than perhaps this teacher. While other students may have said, you know what, this teacher matches up better with my learning style. I'm gonna take that class over here, right? Well, we're taking that art out of teaching. They're all teaching it the same way at the same time. And, and so when it comes to students and, and the way that they learn, different students have different learning styles and different ways that they, that they access information. And, and we're, we're standardizing it. So the, the art of teaching is being taken out of teaching.
That's really strange because you do hear a lot of times leftist and like a lot of things that come through on Facebook. They will say different learning styles and people learn different ways. So, um, to me, it's kind of like when, with the, with the race conversation, right? So the, so Joe Biden will say, in our commercials, we have more interracial families and we have more of this, but in the meantime, behind closed doors, we are pushing for segregation in the, in these areas. And it sounds like so for publicly, we're hearing, oh, we need to cater to all of these different styles or these different ide- um, ideologies. But, um, behind closed doors, we are pushing that everyone is exactly the same, that same outcomes.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And, 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 and that's, that's really what the struggle is. So what, so when some of these ideas, when you talk about CRT, you talk about social and emotional learning and, and, and yeah, there's all kinds of different words that come in. I mean, you know, uh, we, it, COVID, the one thing that COVID did do is, is it caused teachers to say, oh man, our students are mentally struggling, okay? And they were, they like, like, uh, like I have a son who graduated in, in twenty twenty-one, okay? And he was an athlete. Um, he had worked, you know, for, for three years. Now it's his senior year of wrestling. He'd, he'd, he'd been a varsity wrestler for the first three years as freshman, sophomore and junior year. And his goal was to win a state title. And, uh, and some of the rules that they made up and some of the things that they were doing in wrestling, most wrestling tournaments are two days long on a weekend. You'll go Friday and Saturday. The Utah High School Activities Association said, oh, we're gonna limit it to, that wrestling tournaments can only be one day this year. You know, and, and like, how's that helping COVID? Like, now we're gonna do one day instead of two day tournaments. Oh, that will make a huge difference in a sport where we're exchanging sweat and blood. I mean, come on, you know? Um, and, uh, and, and so they, um, the, the, the kids, the kids struggled, you know? Um, and, and he was seeing his senior year, he didn't, he didn't get homecoming his senior year. He didn't get, you know, some of the, some of the things that kids look forward to, to kind of make education, going to school, you know, fun and exciting and, and, and having those opportunities. And, and so we, we saw, we saw these opportunities being taken away from kids. And, and then we saw kids starting to struggle mentally, right? And so now we're saying, oh, we're trying to, we're trying to teach these kids math and English and financial literacy and history. And they have no interest in learning these subject matters because there's so much mental struggle going on in other ways within their minds, right? And this is, this is how this social and emotional learning stuff is coming in. Is it's like, oh, we've gotta help them first be stable mentally before we can help them learn our subject matter, right? And teachers, for the most part, have very good hearts and, and, and their intentions are very good. But oftentimes they're not seeing the underlying, um, you know, agenda of, of, of where it's going and, and what's being pushed. And that's where, you know, individuals like you are, are very helpful and very unique in, in, in opening people's eyes to saying, hey, this is what's going on. You've got, you've got to see this and you've got to see the indoctrination of what's happening, okay? And, you know, to their credit, teachers are wanting to help these students, but what they're losing sight of is that ultimately, the, the mental well-being of that child is primarily the responsibility of the parents.
Absolutely.
Not the schools.
Absolutely. I had, when I went to the school board and I, um, tried to show them SEL and tried to show them, look at this curriculum. This is, this is bad news. This is indoctrination. It's so clear. You can see it in two seconds. You know, I think you've seen the video of the little kids with their fists up in the air or that every minority is in a heat job, right? I'm like, this is not acceptable. This is not acceptable. You're opening yourself up for lawsuits, you know, um. But my thing is, is that how is it when they see that or are they not seeing that? Do they, do the teachers just tell their kids to open up a computer and do whatever? Do they not take a look first at the curriculum and go, holy cow, this is not acceptable?
I, I think, I think, I think some of them are aware. I think most of them are not aware, okay? Um, I, I have a teacher that teaches across the hall from me. Politically speaking, I'd say he lines up with me. Okay, he's, he's a conservative. He came to me and showed me, um, he, he teaches some business classes. And he showed me, they had updated the curriculum for a class that he teaches called Business Leadership, okay? And, um, he said, look at these two standards that they have now added into my business leadership class. And tell me what you think, okay? And he's, and, and, and he was coming at it from the perspective of, this is not, um, like, look at that. I'm trying to get that shirt in there, like, that vocal Kelly.
Great, awesome. Yes.
But, but, uh, um, he, he, he was coming at it from the perspective of, businesses aren't implementing these ideas. And I, and I said, you're right. These are not ideas that businesses are implementing. I said, I, I challenged him. I said, hey, you got a bunch of friends on Facebook that are business owners, right? I said, post these two ideas on your Facebook page and ask businessmen out there if these are, are business principles that are, um, you know, being implemented into the workforce, okay? And, and, and they are not, okay? But what they were is they were Marxist ideas.
And what were they?
Of, 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 of equal, if, equal outcome, not equal opportunity, right? Um, and, and, you know, in businesses, creating an environment where, where all employees are getting, you know, getting the same reward, right? Um, and, and so tho- those were, you know, some of the ideas that were being pushed into.
Question would be, why would we even have classes then? Because classes are supposed to give children or students that knowledge so that they can compete and they can be the top. Like, that's the goal or that should be the goal, is that you, you are given and then what? With the knowledge that you're given, you do what you are capable of doing, right?
And, 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 and a word that you just mentioned that is absolute taboo in, in education is compete. Okay, um, right? Because, because, uh, you know, competition creates, uh, you know, and, and, and it's really kind of funny because, hey, I'm a coach too, right? Uh, um, and, 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 and you have one side of education over here that's, that's athletics, dance, band. I, I teach at American Fork High School. Our band program at American Fork is phenomenal, right? And they compete and they compete hard and they work hard, right? So i- it's funny because sometimes coaches, okay, and, and a lot of these guys are my friends. Sometimes they have a reputation of not giving as much emphasis to the classroom as to what they give to their, their sport, with their coaching. Okay, and, and, and it exists and, and it's, and it's fairly accurate. But do you want to know why? Because they're being held accountable for their coaching position. They're not being held accountable for their teaching position. If they don't win on the field of play, they'll get fired.
Right.
Okay, parents will come after them. Parents want their job, okay? And, and they'll no longer be the coach if, 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 if they don't win, right? In a lot of ways.
It doesn't really matter.
Yeah, but in the classroom, that doesn't happen, right?
See now, what I look at as mediocrity, if you, if you are just mediocre.
Correct.
That's depressing. Like, you want to be the best at what you do. Like, I, I think, I, I think that most people, you, you get, that's true, building their self-esteem to be the best at what you do. And not everyone's gonna be the best at everything. But di- different people have different skills, but everyone is the best at something, I think.
Yeah.
So why would we take that away from them?
Well, and that's, and, and that's where, uh, this is where, you know, when we talk about that collaboration process that's taking place in education right now, you know, i- i- it, it could be a good thing. And, and it could be a good thing by saying, hey, look, my students did really well on this standard in our curriculum. Let me show you how I teach that.
Yeah.
Okay, and now the, the way that, the way that I teach that may not be the way that you're going to teach it, but at least you're able to see some of the things because tha- that comes back to the art of teaching, right? If teaching is an art, then we don't all create the same painting. And, and we don't all create, you know, the, the same picture, which is what's happening, right? How boring is art if it's all the same?
Right. Well, and it takes away, a lack of creativity creates apathy.
Right.
Apathy creates depression.
Sure.
So why then, it seems to me like we're going in a circle with SEL. Because SEL's ultimate goal is to create apathy. Everybody agrees the same. And if you don't, my gosh. I've been reading some of the transgender, the kids who go through transgenderism or who question it, especially these seventh grade girls. And then they leave school, their parents pull them out or whatever because they're concerned. The kids change their mind after a few days of not having that, basically having certain clubs pushed down their throats. Um, and then they're afraid to come back to school because they're going to be bullied for not being, for not complying.
Sure, yeah. Uh, uh, and, 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 yeah, that's, um, we're, 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 I, I tell people teenage kids have always sought attention, okay? And, and the kind of attention that we give them can be positive or it can be negative. But no matter which type we give them, there are kids who, who, who will do things that are rebellious because they're seeking attention. They want somebody to pay attention to them, right? And so they'll lash out in a certain way, you know? And, and I feel like what we're, what we're doing right now is we're feeding negative attention to students. And we're saying, hey, you can pretend like you're a cat and we'll feed you negative atten- I think it's negative attention, right? And I think that one's so easy, but, but, but it's the same idea, right? And it's like, like, all teenage kids are going through a, a tremendous mental struggle within themselves to discover who they are, you know, and, and to recognize. And if, and if we're, if we're saying, hey, if you, if you say that you're this, then you're gonna get lots of attention and you're going to get lots of people, whether it be negative or positive, that'll, they'll pay attention to you, right? Um, and, 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 and like I say, this is nothing new, you know, different, i- i- different generations. Kids have maybe lashed out in different ways. But I feel like what we're doing right now is, when you used to, when you used to cry out for negative attention in the past, we'd say, don't do that. And, and we'd try to, try not to reinforce that behavior. And I feel like right now, we're reinforcing bad, bad behavior.
Being forced tonight, being forced to affirm.
Yeah.
Like, that's coming down the pipeline. It's a lot of being forced to affirm. And what I think about, um, for my generation, a lot of what girls had anorexia or bulimia.
Right, right.
No, you would not tell somebody like that. You look fantastic. Keep doing what you're doing.
Right.
Cause you're, you're feeding mental illness. And then I think the other part of that, forcing other children to affirm it, forcing other people in the class to affirm it, is making, making the mental illness like a cancer, making it grow. You know, because if you aren't allowed to tell the truth, then you're gonna have, you're going to have problems too. You're going to have a disconnect with reality yourself. And I don't understand, again, where these goals come from and how more teachers, especially because they are kind-hearted, they are empathetic, and generally, you get into this because you want to improve the world for the better. It's most reason why people become teachers. Then why is it that they're taking on this? I have one example, um, I talk to my niece all the time and she's a, she's a junior, she'll be a junior. And, um, she was failing a class and her teacher said, well, you can write a paper or you can do a podcast. Well, she took Aunt Carrie's advice and she just, she just wrote a, she did her podcast on CRT.
Cool.
Did a podcast based on, this is what's going on and I think it's more divisive. And I didn't even know she did this until afterwards. But her teacher responded to her. Her teacher in Salem responded to her and said, oh my gosh, I've been to so many trainings about this subject and I didn't even know that this is what I was learning.
Right.
So I, I, if I can ask, I want to know what those trainings look like.
Um, so, I'll, I'll give you an example of a professional development meeting and, and it, and it's coming, it's coming down, it's coming for, a lot of times you'll hear, oh, CRT is just a college thing, right? Well, right, but it's a college thing that now has been perpetuated to college students who are now teachers, right? And so those teachers are disseminating that information to high school students, okay? Um, a- and maybe not recognizing because, because they bought into it when they were in college, right? And, and, and just the, the idea of, you know, of, of white privilege and of, um, the, the, the oppressor versus the oppressed, you know, um, the victim mentality. And, and so, um, this, 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 this victim mentality is being perpetuated. And it's like, okay, you know, all right, all my students now, and they're coming at it from the perspective of, oh, all of my students are, are victims. Okay, um, and so, oh, if, if, if my child comes from a broken home, they're a victim. And therefore, since they come from a broken home, it's, it's my responsibility as a teacher to make sure that I, I, you know, give them things to help them move forward, you know? Um, they underestimate the resiliency of, 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 of people in general and especially teenage kids to, to rise above, I think, struggle and, and hardship, you know? to to rise above, I think, struggle and and hardship, you know? Um, which I think has as you look at some of the great, the greatest human beings, you know, that we celebrate in history, and they've had to overcome a lot of very difficult things in their lives, right? Um, and I I'm part, you know, uh, familiar with your story. And I I know you've got a a story where you have, you've had to overcome um, some major things, right? Um, I I I I, um, I'd mentioned to you that I grew up in the home of a steel worker, right? And Geneva Steel went through shutdowns and layoffs and strikes and plant shutting down and things like that. My, you know, um, when I was fourteen years old, our family filed for bankruptcy. I re- I remember how difficult that time was, you know? Um, but teenage kids are resilient and they learned to, they they learned to cope and they learned to overcome. And I think, you know, we've gotta provide that sport, the support, but um, I I didn't ever feel like I was a victim, you know?
You're tearing down their grit, that's that's probably the one of the biggest hardest things for me to watch, is that you are tearing down their grit. Instead of saying, yes, it's been hard, there's a lot of hard things that you've been through. And, you know, as teachers, we're gonna support you in the ways that we can, we're also going to listen to your family. Because I'm sure the one of the hardest things that I've seen here, because everybody makes it a black white issue and they completely go over the Hispanic issue. And I'm like, there's a lot of people here who have come here because they know that America offers them more than their home country did.
Sure.
And they're gonna be pissed, excuse my language, but they are going to be pissed as parents when they find out that their kids, who they're giving everything they've got to, they're working two and three jobs, you know? They're doing everything they can, making sure that their kids have the best opportunities, and yet their kids are being told they're a victim in school. That's tearing down their grit, tearing down everything that in their homes, their parents are working to give them.
Yeah, and a- and 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 this is, this is the struggle of ours of of, and I'll I'll talk specifically about the Utah culture. Okay, because I I think we're trying to be good people, right? And so when somebody calls us a racist, man, that's hurtful, that like, I I I don't wanna be a racist, how do I, you know? A- and uh, um, I I I went through a divorce about five years ago. And um, when I was going through my divorce, one of the things that I would do to take my mind off of things and to just kinda get away and do some things, I would go out and I would drive Uber, okay? Um, and and I had an experience one night where I picked up a black man. Um, and I always engaged with with my passengers and would talk and 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 that's part of why I would do it. I I really loved learning from the perspective and 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 this guy was from Detroit, right? Um, and uh, I'm like, why did you come to Utah? The economy, right? Um, well, how do you like Utah? I hate it, I think it's so racist, I think it's so, um. And 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 I says, I said, do you have a job? Yeah, are you are you thriving, are you doing well? Oh, yeah, I mean, you know, yeah, the economy here is great. Um, and and what about Detroit, how were things for you, how were things for you in Detroit? I was horrible, can't find work, can't do this, right? And so it's like you're leaving, you left some policies where you can't even find a job. You came to a place where you you're having no problem finding a job. But I but I but I I left that conversation, it's like, man, I like, okay, I, the guy doesn't get the politics. And he doesn't get how the politics of Utah are the reason why we have such a strong economy. And the politics of Detroit are why you have such a weak economy in Detroit, right? The very next person I picked up was another black man and he was from Chicago, right? And I I I had almost, I I was asking a lot of the same questions, okay? And and I and I asked him, hey, how do you feel about Utah? Oh, love it here, okay, why'd you come? Cause of the economy, okay, how's it treating you? Oh, it's great, love it, how do you feel about the people of Utah? Oh, I think they're great, right? How do, you know, how do you, you know, and and I kind of specifically asked him because of the previous ride I had. You think people in Utah are racist? No, he's like, no, who, why, why, why do you think that? Why do you think people of Utah are racist? And I told him about the previous ride I just had and he's he says, ah, he says, that guy needs to go to Alabama or something. You know, he's like, if he thinks Utah is racist and 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 so, uh, we uh, we we kinda have this fear and 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 this. Uh, oh, man, and and so I think what what we do is we we, instead of just treating people like people, you know, we 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 turn it into race. And I think it's it's kind of a reverse racism, that I'm gonna treat you really, really special because you have a different color of skin than I do and it's condescending. And it's, i- it's.
Oh, oh, my gosh, cool, that that has been my m- my thing, I lived here before when my son was two and I didn't feel anything, anything like I do now. Now, when I go to Congress to speak, um, they, first they get super excited, whoa, we've got a person of color here to speak. And instead of say what they don't like, they literally say, well, you don't represent the narrative. And I'm like, do you not realize how racist that is?
Right.
So in my experience, the majority of peoples, the majority of conservatives, real, real conservatives, right? Um, don't care, don't don't care at all, it's like, are you a decent person, am I a decent person, awesome? But um, the the polit- the politicians, um, you know, our governor. Um, and you know, a- a- and and that group of people, they are so consumed with race that they're making it worse than it's ever been in my lifetime. I honestly, I mean, I know I'm here for a reason, but I honestly feel like this is bad. Because they're trying so hard to not be racist that they are racist essentialists.
Yeah, yeah.
And they're teaching our children to be that and our and our teachers. I had a teacher, I was interviewed for um, at UVU for their School of Social Work. And in the conversation, it was, should critical race theory be implemented in our schools? And how should it be implemented? So obviously, they had a swan towards it. And one of the questions that a young teacher or young social worker asked me is, well, when I'm grading papers, how do I not, how do I not consider my own internalized bias? And I just thought, I as somebody who works in a school, I'm a par educator or I was, I'm going to be doing a lot more of this, so. Um, so I um, I just thought, oh, you use your gradebook. He use your gradebook and you and you just mark it, and he literally said, well, I guess I can erase their names. And that lets you know the the perspective, where where we are headed is far more racist than I've ever seen in my, you know, I grew up in the eighties and nineties and that was just not what school was.
Right, I I uh, I served an LDS mission in Cape Town, South Africa, okay? I was there, um. I I I actually arrived in South Africa when they held the referendum vote, which was the vote that was gonna decide as to whether the blacks could vote in the next election or not. And and you think South Africa, I I mean, it was, you know, a huge black population there. And they they had, you know, apartheid had only not been, had have been eliminated only a couple of years before I got there. But apartheid was, it was blacks, coloreds and whites, right? And and so stupid, so stupid, right? Um, blacks were black Africans, coloreds were like Malaysians and Indians and stuff like that. And then whites, and and here's how stupid it is, right? Asians, okay, they were honorary whites. Why? Cause they have money, right? I just, it it's it's and and I, a- and I and I watched that country over that the course of those two years. And um, I left two months before Nelson Mandela was elected the first black president of South Africa, right? But man, I like racism, okay, it had, yeah, racism is is, it was real, right? And and how I define racism, I I I think it's synonymous with ignorance, okay? If 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 you, if you don't take the time to learn about the individual and who the individual is, I think that's when you can easily become racist, you know?
Yeah, I I think of bigotry as as ignorance, so I don't hold anything against people who are bigoted. Because, you know, they they've been exposed to, this is the only experience they've ever seen. What I see on TV now, when I when I see celebrations of Juneteenth and it's just twerking and doing all of that stuff, I think it's intentional. I think the goal is to make African Americans look like they're ignorant, you know? And and that that makes me super sad because, just just like what you were saying about Africa or South Africa and because they had money. Well, th- the assumptions that people are making here and and the African Americans, for for the most part, that I associate with, well, they're like six times wealthier than I am, so, so I'm like, these are very professional people. These are very quote-unquote articulate people, they they, you know, they've gone to college, they've gotten their degrees. They're all of these people, but yet their children are supposed to go to school and hear the message that they're oppressed.
Right.
It's ticking people off, it's making, I mean, a lawsuit's probably coming, you know? Um, but my thing is just in trying to understand where where teachers are coming from.
Yeah.
When you get that curriculum in front of you that says this, don't they go, whoa, no?
No, no, uh, uh, I mentioned my friend that came to me and he looked at that, so, I'm like, yeah, yeah. And and but most of them are like, oh, that's sweet, you know? It's it's uh, the bleeding heart liberal, right? I i- it, they they, I do feel like they come from a good place, but I do also think that they're ignorant of how the real world functions. And because because schoolteachers exist in a socialist system and they see, like, hey, when the pandemic hit, did I worry about my paycheck? Nope, did I have any concern as to whether I was gonna continue to get paid or not? Nope, everybody, most everybody else in the country was concerned about whether I'm gonna continue to get paid. They were concerned about if I'm if I'm gonna lose my job, how's this gonna impact me? If you own your own business, you were concerned about your employees, you were concerned about your business and the and 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 your ability to continue to keep your business open, right? Um, and and so, the 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 idea of risk, and and I tell people all the time, like, schoolteachers are the most risk adverse people you'll ever meet, okay? In the sense that it's like, you know, I I I don't, there's no, not a lot of risk that I take, okay? And on some levels, that that there's, there's a lot of good things about that. But the but the 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 problem that it creates is, I I, it makes it hard for teachers to understand the reality of how the real world works.
Wow, that is, you you literally just blew my mind because I worked in a classroom this year and I did. I I could tell that there was some friction between me and the teacher because I'm always thinking about this stuff. And I'm not, not during the classroom, but like afterwards, the kids are gone and you're grading papers or whatever, you know, I'm like, have you seen this? And I get the comment, you know, more than once I've gotten the comment, it must be hard to always look for the worst in things. And it's not accurate, I don't always look for the worst in things, but there are things that are right in front of our faces.
Yeah.
And I'm like, and and I have my, I've got my one baby, you know, and I want him protected. And I've got, I've got the kids that I care about and I want them protected. And faith is a big part of, you know, I want these things protected.
It's.
And they're being chopped away and teachers are like, we can't see it, right?
Right.
Wow, that's.
Just ju- just like it's, it's right in front of your face, right? And 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 I I mean, I'll tell another politically charged topic that I was, I like, I was way over. Let's go, I was way over here on the right when most of my peers were way over here was the COVID thing and the mask thing. And and I'm like, look at the data, would you please just look at the data? You know, and I'm arguing with, uh, there's, there's a couple of science teachers in my school that were like, and they, it's funny that they'll always do it quietly because they don't wanna upset people, right? And I'm like, look at the, but I'm arguing with science teachers about COVID. Oh, oh, but I know about viruses more than you know about viruses because I'm a science teacher. Oh, and I'm like, you're, if you're a science teacher, have you looked at the data? Okay, because part of recognizing science is looking at the data and looking at how it's working. And and this is why, like, you know, as as we were making decisions about how to deal with our kids and and a- and I was just absolutely blown away at the absolute ignorance of people when it came to looking at the data, you know? And yeah, we're dealing with a pandemic, I get it, okay? But if you look at how this was impacting teenage kids and and school age kids, it 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 was not killing them.
Well, there's still children today that are wearing these masks over their faces, you know, still today and and.
And 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 we have, uh, like, there are a handful of teachers at my school that that are still wearing masks. And and my attitude is, okay, and I I I told my wife, I have to be careful right now because if if there's ever an ism that I have right now, it's maskism. I see people in a mask and I'm like, you know, I just, and I'm like, all right, I gotta start to learn to be. I mean, that could be somebody, that could be somebody who has cancer.
Is genuine.
You know, and and is trying to, you know, take some measures and protect, I I, you know, and I'm like, okay, I can't be just because you have a mask on, but they're they're in a lot of ways for a lot of individuals now, it's it's absolute virtue signaling.
Well, and also.
And it's nothing else because the the data has borne itself out at this.
Well, and our, our school did an evaluation and they called, they called the families of the kids wearing masks and asked them, are are they medically fragile, is there, is there a reason that they need this? And they found out that it it was a security. So it is mentally become, so I don't, so there's virtue signaling, which, you know, clutching your pearls and I'm so good. And I do think there is a fraction, probably a larger fraction of that, but there are kids that are so mentally, so mentally taken down and dismantled, to use their words, right? So mentally dismantled because of what they, because of the fear that that went through them. I know that my son, when he, he had a friend who had MS and was just diagnosed with it. And and the friend had asked, can you go trick or treating with me? So he goes trick or treating with this kid during the height of COVID. And his other friends, and they're sixth graders at this time, his other friends get online and call and and bully him and say, how could you be so, how could you be so unthoughtful and so unkind? You put everybody at risk by doing this, that was very selfish, they're sixth graders. I know other kids who, you know, who started cutting themselves.
Right.
Because they didn't know what to do and how many, how many kids this, this pandemic
Yeah.
brought on their depression, they had no sense of depression because children generally are fearless. Genuinely, you're telling them, get off the roof, you know? And now, they're scared, they're worried, they're apathetic, they're, you know, they they have all of these things going in in their mind that kids shouldn't have going on in their minds. And then we bring in, then we open up the door for SL, almost, SCL, almost as if it was planned.
Right, but what, look, notice what we've done though, is we've created, we've created this victim mentality in our kids and and we're pushing the ideology of this.
What I say is that.
Victim mentality, right?
They figured out what worked with African Americans for years, because I've had people who tell me, you know, how dare you think we have self-will? How how dare you think that we free will, you know, we don't, we don't have this. And now what worked with them, they're now bringing on to the gender crowd.
Right, and and I, uh, you know, this is where, again, I was looking at data through the whole COVID thing, right? And it's and it's a risk assessment, right? If I get in a car and drive, I'm taking a risk, okay? I could die on the road that day, okay? So do we outlaw cars? Do we shut down roads to keep people safe? No, we allow people to make a risk assessment, do you wanna get in your car and drive today, right? And and we 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 give teenagers licenses to drive, okay? And and sometimes we give them cars to drive by themselves, right? And and if you look at the risk assessment of doing that, you know, hey, there's a risk that those kids may get in a car accident, okay? And they may lose their life, but but every day, every day, we're making a risk assessment. We're we're saying, hey, is this something that's worth the risk? I have a son that did downhill mountain biking, okay? And I got to the point where I had to not watch anymore, cause he scared me to death, like, oh, my gosh, the things this kid is doing is crazy. But I trusted his coach, I trusted that he was teaching him the right technique, you know? Gratefully, never had any serious injury, but but I mean, I I I had to allow him to just go, do, take that risk, right? Because because I I wanna teach my. Because because I I wanna teach my kids, I want my kids to understand that. That recognizing that there's a risk, but being willing to take that risk. You know, there's there's positive things that can happen as a result of that, now sometimes you fail, okay? And 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 you can learn as much from those as you can the successes, right? But but we're almost teaching our kids to to not take any risk, well, that's the the American dream. Is you come to America, you can be whatever you wanna be. And if you wanna be a high school financial literacy teacher, go for it, right? Um, there's a part of me that that like, like, I I have a very entrepreneurial spirit and, you know, I've I've. Uh, got a wrestling business and I and I run camps and clinics and a club and things like that. But I've had failures, right? And I've I've had a, I had a camp series that I was doing with an Olympic gold medalist. And and it flopped, I lost money, you know?
Yeah.
And and you learn from it, you know? And uh, and and that's that's what entrepreneurs do, but if if we don't have people who are willing to take those risks. You know, it 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 it's gonna, it's gonna ultimately be the downfall.
Well, and I think it's important to realize that they're openly saying they want to dismantle an entrepreneurial spirit.
Right.
These are, these are things that they want gone. Um, and in in treating our kids, again, that's where I go, how do our teachers not recognize this? So my question is then, as running for the school board, how would you? How would you change this? How, one, how can we wake up teachers? Because I'm interested, I'm really interested in teachers and in knowing that my kid is safe. And I don't mean safe in terms of, you know, not exposed to COVID, I mean, safe.
Here's, we have to create competition in education. And and I think that's one of the first things that we have to start moving towards. Um, and what, you know, hey, overnight, I'm not gonna be able to come in and 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 implement merit pay for teachers. Or anything of that nature, right? But um, you know, I mentioned that on a on a teacher's pay scale, you have years and you have education, right? Well, why not some sort of system that re- that rewards excellence? If if you, if you are showing proficiency or excellence in teaching. Um, then then let's move you up that pay scale because of the results that you're getting. You know, uh, you don't have to go get a master's degree to move up that pay scale, you just have to show you're be doing an excellent job. Right, and and the one thing that I think initially you're gonna have to be careful of is pitting pitting this teacher against, you know, like. Because that's when they get nervous, right? But if we say, hey, here's a, here's a metric by which if you achieve this. You get to move up the pay scale, okay? Then then we're starting to incentivize excellence. And and we've got to find a way to incentivize and reward excellence in education. Because I think if if we can start to do that, um, and and you know what? Part of the part of that is charter schools, homeschooling. I recognize that parents should be making the decision that is best for their student. And if they think that the public school system is out of touch and is not serving their student the way they 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 think they should. And they homes choose to homeschool or they choose to, you know, put them in a charter school or a private school. That's that parent's right, and I think I think it's important that we recognize. My job as a school board member is to try to make those public schools competitive in the market. Okay, and make it so that a parent questions whether they want to have their school, their student at a private school. Versus, and and one of the problems we have in Utah. Is that we don't have a lot of private school options for kids, you know? We've just kinda gone along and just had this public education system and we think we're doing really well. Do you know why we've done so well in Utah in our public education system? Because we have strong families. You know, and 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 the 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 strength of the family unit in Utah. Has produced great results, it's not because our public schools are so great, you know?
I agree with that, but I have heard, I've heard from another, from a school board member in in Nebo. Um, that we quote unquote used to have strong families. Um, and that families today just sort of are walking over and saying, you know, it's your job and they're not. They're not supportive of the teachers, their children can do no wrong. Um, and that's exhausting teachers, and I I think I've seen that kind of stuff be true. I've seen, when I talk to parents, they're often like, I I can't be bothered with this, you know? And I'm like, it's it's your kids. So I I I I do agree, I mean, that's why we moved here, we moved here because we believed that our child would be safe. And then we get here and we see this pushing out of families, this complete, we're not relevant. I go to the school board and I talk to them just like I'm talking to you. And they have this, you know, she's a hateful person, she's blah, 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 and it's like, I'm not that person, you know? I I actually never went up and said mask, mask, masks or whatever else, you know? Um, I just, m- my line is drawn at teaching kids oppression and oppressor. That that is the line where I'm like, no, and also the fact that I've got, you know, nieces and nephews that are older than my son. And can't compete with him academically because he's in a charter. And those, that's that's the reality, but I I think that. Like, one of the things that I would like to see is is parents take more of an interest, and I think part of the reason we don't is because we've got these, right?
Yeah, yeah.
It's a good distraction.
Yeah. Um, and 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 I, where I would agree with your friend in in Nebo is, I I. I think there's a decline, I think there's a decline in Utah, you know, I think there's a decline all over the country. And and that's the struggle, the the struggle is the the decline of the family, you know, and I I mentioned to you that five years ago, I went through. A divorce of my own, which is a hard thing, it was a hard thing for me, it was a hard thing for my kids, right? And and it's kind of the reality of our society in a lot of ways that 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 happens and those things are happening, right? But I I can tell you this, um, our kids, our our kids were never dragged into the middle of it. And I and I watch adults do that all too often. Um, another individual that works in my school. Recently went through a divorce and I watched the kids get dragged through that one and the damage that it causes to those kids is just. I I I can't imagine that parents are willing to do that to their kids, right? And in my case, I'm 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 grateful to be able to say that, hey, we we we. Um, we we never used the kids as pawns or, you know, or ever. Um, you know, we tried to cre- create a scenario where they they knew that both parents cared for them. That 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 we're gonna work together to make sure that their needs are being met, you know? Um, and I I I think even even through broken families and stuff like that, we've got to recognize the importance and the fragility of kids. You know, um, uh, because those things do happen, right? Um, and and so, yeah, I do, I do think that there's a decline. I in in family, but I, as a as a conservative school teacher, and this is one of the things. You you mentioned kind of the parents mentality of, uh, my child's a victim, right? And as as a conservative teacher, I can tell you, if I say something conservative in my classroom. I'll often get a phone call to the principal and sometimes the superintendent, you know, and and somebody will say this or. And I'll get my hand slapped and, you know, and. Don't do that, you know, and and oftentimes I'm like, you know, okay, if I say this, you know, and. I mean, I teach financial literacy, so I'm teaching about the economy and I'm teaching about gas prices and I'm teaching. And and I get, you you have to, I have to share with them the reality of supply and demand and what's going on. And when you're, when you reduce the supply of oil, then price is gonna go up and, you know, and and. It just common sense stuff that we've gotta be teaching kids, but when I do that, I I'm almost inevitably, I'll get it, you know. Oh, you shouldn't be saying that in class, okay, whatever. Um, but a- a- as a conservative parent, I'm not teaching my child to be. To be a victim of things that teachers are saying in class.
Right.
You know, and 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 I I just, I might, the biggest thing I'm struggling with, I don't know that I know the answer to that. But the 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 balance of like making sure that we're being heard. But not being the victim, you know? How do we balance that, and I think the 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 best way right now that I've seen is that we have got to. We've got to get involved and we gotta be proactive. Our PTAs are infiltrated by lefties. Our school community councils are infiltrated by people on the left. Our school administrations are infiltrated with people on the left, right? And it's like, okay, we need, and and I know, like, we're busy, you know, being involved in our kids' lives and being busy and being, you know. Other things like that, but we've got to make getting involved in our kids' education a priority. And we need conservative people to join the PTA and to get involved in leadership in the in PTA. And we need them to be on school community councils and we need them to attend board meetings occasionally. And 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 be involved and know what's going on, because I think, um, you know. The uh, the 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 victim mentality, I think, says, oh, in order for me to protect my kid, I guess I better go be on the PTA presidency. And then I'll be able to better protect my kids from the victimhood that they're experiencing, you know? I think conservative parents, they go for it, learn how to survive, learn how to be resilient. But at the same time, as a result, then we're losing control, and I don't know if control is the best word, but we're losing. Um, that voice in education, and and so I would strongly encourage. You know, conservative parents need to get involved, they need to do what you're doing, they need to show up to board meetings, they need to show up and. And and they didn't need to have those conversations and. Um, i- i- it's, it is hard, I mean, you said that they they see you as an angry person. Imagine how they see me as a school teacher in Alpine School District.
Right, yeah, I think you have a massive amount of courage, you're you're my first teacher, I've got three in line, but you're my first teacher. Who's who's up to actually to talk about it, and I think the conversations have to be had. I also think that we have to, we have to draw that line, we have to build back the trust. Because I think school boards have worked hard to break down, or not school boards, unions have worked hard to break down. The connection of parents and students, I I'm sorry, not parents and students, but parents and teachers. You know, you, pe- teachers often think, well, they often say, we're the expert, you need to trust us.
Yeah.
And parents often say, you're not the expert in raising my child.
Right, exactly.
And we need to find that, like, we're supposed to be a team, wanting the best for our children.
And 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 every parent knows this, every parent knows, like, I've got five of my own. And all five are very different, right? And I don't treat this one the same way that I treat this one, because they're different, right?
Right.
And so it to to, for educators to think that I can treat all students the same and my results are gonna be the same. Is part of the naivety of of young teachers, right? Um, when you get teachers who have also been parents of teenage kids and watch them go through the process. They start to get it a little bit more, right? That, hey, you know, when you, you know, if you wanna apply your socialist principles in the classroom. Good luck, you know?
Do you think the teachers realize they're socialists?
Uh, no.
And how do we, how do we help them realize that?
Well, here's, here's another idea that I've had, I told you about one way with the pay scales to kind of create some competition. Um, we were asking teachers to go get master's degrees to move up the pay scale, right? I would love to see, in in Alpine School District, there's something that I'd love to see is some kind of a program where. You can get lane chains, lane changes and move up the pay scale for going and doing internships. At businesses during this the summer. And so instead of going and getting a master's degree, you spend, you know, eight weeks with this business. Um, and you do that for two summers in a row. And we'll we'll count that as an equivalent of, you know, twenty-five credit hours in. In a master's degree and move you up the pay scale or something of that nature, you know? And I I think it, I think it would do a really good job of exposing teachers to more real world experiences. And 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 exposing them to the the recognition that, man, and not everything works like it works in education.
Right, cause that was one of the things that I saw and and was concerned about when I. When you saw all of these ads during COVID about how teachers are heroes, how we couldn't do anything without teachers, because then you started to see teachers. Acting like they were the most important, and I do think teachers are important because you couldn't become anything else without having been education.
Sure.
But I don't think that a teacher is more important than a grocery store worker, you know, who's.
Yeah.
Making sure that we can eat, or a nurse, or, you know, any of the other truck drivers, any of these people, right? Like, everybody has a role to play, and it seems to me that it became a situation for a lot of teachers. Kind of an elitist, kind of an elitism, and.
There's there's a, there's an elitism as well because of the level of education that most school teachers have, you know, and and I. Uh, uh, I have two master's degrees, right? And I and I tease my students about this because there are a couple of teachers in my school who have their doctorate degree. And they demand that their students call them doctor. And uh, and and I tease, I've got two master's degrees and so you need to call me Master Master Kelly. Okay, um, and and they know it's a joke and they know that, like, 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 I'm not, I'm not trying to elevate it. But the the idea that I'm elevated to here because I have, you know. Uh, there is this, there is this attitude of, you know, elitism that exists. Um, and because, again, because like, oh, the only way that I can get a raise is to go get a master's degree or to go get. You know, a doctorate degree and things like that, and you start, you start getting education and and tacking that on to your resume. It sure helps your pay scale and it helps you out as a school teacher, but. I I also look at the amount of debt that teachers accumulate to do that, and that's why if we looked outside the box and looked for different ways. To incentivize teachers to broaden their educational experience and not just through. You know, the traditional college route, I think it might create more exposure to what's really happening in that world. And so it's not all in 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 this bubble of education.
Yeah, yeah, well, I really appreciate the time that you've taken. Um, is there anything else that you wanna talk about, address?
No, I uh, I'm running for Alpine Board of Education, it's seat seven, which is the Mountain View Cluster. Um, so it's West Orem and Vineyard is the area that I'm running in, but. Uh, s- school board members are elected in a specific area and a specific seat, but they serve the entire district, so. Um, if you have friends in the area, tell them to get out and vote, Tuesday we'll find out. Um, it, but uh, these are nonpartisan races. And I do that because I don't know that there's any race that's no longer partisan. Um, it 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 it's, politics is partisan. Um, but as a result of being a nonpartisan race, there will be two people that will move on to the general election in November, no matter what. I hope to be in that top two, but I don't wanna finish in second, I wanna finish in first going into the, into the general election, so. Get out and vote and I I appreciate the time.
Oh, yeah, I absolutely, every, the first time I heard you speak, I was like, oh, he's the guy, he's the only, the only guy. Who who I think should should be on the on the board, and I'm just glad that there are, that there are defenders. That there there are people who are willing to be truthful, honest, stand up for our kids, and that there are places where our kids are still safe, so. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, bye.